All right, well, let's get it started. Let's get this over with. Good evening, everybody. It's the Fortuna Planning Commission for December 8th. The meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act. The governor's emergency COVID orders. Start off with the opening flag salute. We're gonna do the flag salute. Not standing. Please don't take any offense by all this, with all this weirdness going on. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Blakely?
Here.
And Commissioner Bradley is not here. Commissioner Church?
Here.
Commissioner Hallie?
Here.
Commissioner McLendon? While I'll let Liz announce that. Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
All right, and then that's it for this evening.
Okay. Get approval of the November 24th meeting. The minutes, please. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the last meeting minutes.
The November 24th minute is good.
November 24th.
Perfect. So anyone to second that? Jason, can you second that?
Sure, I'll second that. I just didn't know if I was supposed to, or if I can be an alternate or not, or how does that work?
Since we don't have everybody here, so you're in.
Okay, then I'll second that.
Now, you can make a motion. Okay. Hey, there he is. How you doing, Sandy? Okay, can we get a roll call on that?
Hold on.
A moment.
Or can we do that on this one, too?
No, we, this one we do, I believe. Need to do the roll call. Commissioner Blakely?
Here.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
And then Mobley.
Yes. Okay. So oral comment from the public. So anybody out there that wants to talk about anything that's not on the agenda tonight can speak. Remember, please remember that be advised that all, that by law, the commission cannot deliberate or take any action on anything that is not on the agenda. So if you'd like to comment, please call the number, use the passcode. We'll give you a couple of minutes to go over that. Katie, we seeing anything going on?
We do not have any public comment at this moment.
Okay, so we're gonna close public comment. If somebody kicks in, please let us know. All right, let's start off the business at hand. Public hearing considered approval of a subdivision that posed to subdivide 23,000, or, excuse me, 23,017 square feet parcel into two parcels, 13,900 square feet and a 10,300 square foot parcel. The address is 2070 Newburgh Road. So can we get some background on that, please?
Liz, you're muted.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm gonna go right to the screen. Chris read the agenda title, so we know what we're looking at. This is a minor subdivision of an, of a developed parcel that's located in the center of town, basically. This is located on Newburgh. It's the southwest corner of Newburgh and Longdale, right across from the elementary school. And this shows, this is an area that shows the property line and the solid line, and then the potential split that would split off the existing single family on the north side and then the four multifamily units on the south side. This is in an area of single family mostly to the east and then multifamily and a mix of single family to the west and to the south. So this is an older, you know, developed at a time when the rest of this Longdale area was developed with really similar, you know, single family and multifamily. And so they want to create the split to, you know, basically just get the single family separated. And then the four multifamily would be on a separate lot as well. And here you can see the zoning. So the parcel is located here and it is in the R16 zone. It's right on the border of the RM multifamily. And it's to the south of public facility. That's for the elementary school. So the multifamily units are nonconforming, but there isn't any development proposed with this. So there won't be any change to that nonconforming status. The zoning code does describe that, that nonconforming uses are allowed to continue. And there's certain, certain situations where they can be changed with a use permit, but basically they are allowed to continue, you know, that's being grandfathered in. So we are not increasing the degree of nonconformity here by, you know, proposing any development. And this is the tentative map. Newburgh Road is at the top and Longdale is here on the east side. And this just basically shows the property lines, the potential split, the single family home. You can see a garage and a couple of sheds here. And then the four apartment buildings with the carport lawn area in the, in between, like a little courtyard and in the front, and then a storage shed in the back. This is a developed part of town, so the utilities are in place. The subdivision has been reviewed by the city engineer, the public works department, city surveyor. It did get referred out to utility agencies, including PG&E, Southern Link, AT&amp;T. And the facilities, again, all of the facilities are in place. The only physical change would be the need for a cleanout, sewer cleanout on parcel two, the multifamily parcel. And that's, you know, just kind of a minor change that won't even include, won't require any improvement plans. So infrastructure is existing appropriately sized. Fire department didn't have any comments. The roadway is, you know, full collector and are sort of arterial on Newburgh with adequate access for the fire department. And the environmental review, it's an infill development, no potential significant impacts, no, no construction. Pretty minimal conditions of approval, really just paying taxes, paying the fees, submitting a final map to get recorded, installing the sanitary sewer cleanout. And actually, that's it. So it's a pretty minor and straightforward subdivision. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Anybody have anything for staff?
I don't see that, the applicant has not joined us, but he has been informed of the meeting and he did receive a property notice. And all of the neighbors within 300 feet have been notified as well. Oh, I will add that the city installed the sidewalks. So for a long time, that side of Longdale was missing sidewalks and that's all been completely upgraded. You know, you may be aware if you've driven on that part of Newburgh. That was all done under a Safe Route to School grant.
All right. Anybody have anything for staff? Questions, comments?
Sounds pretty straightforward to me.
Okay, not hearing any. Open it up for public comment.
We do have somebody that just joined us. I'm not sure.
Hey.
Is that Mr. Gladon?
Yes, it is.
There he is.
Yeah, there is two sewer cleanouts in the duplex. I don't know if that's what they were talking about.
Oh, okay, no, I'm not sure. I assumed that there was. Was that for two lines, two sewer lines?
Well, the one and two, the duplex in the back, there's a cleanout by them. And then there's a cleanout in front of number four before it goes out to the street.
Let me see, this is a condition from the city engineer. Sewer lateral cleanup should be installed at the back of the sidewalk in front of parcel two. So I, you know, that's a minor thing that can be worked out with him.
Okay.
As to what he wants it to serve and where it needs to be located.
Okay, yeah, that's not, not an issue if that's needed to be done.
Or anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Gladon? Okay, hearing done, and open it up to public comment. So Katie, can you flash that back up there again, please? Again, anybody like to make a comment or talk about this? Please call in, we'll give you a couple of minutes. While we're waiting, is any, have the planning commissioners have anything they'd like to bring up about it? You guys are not talkative tonight.
This probably has to do with my report writing and presentation skills. I've answered all of the questions that you might have.
You got it down, Liz.
On this complex matter.
That's right.
And a good job, too, we might add.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. So Katie, we're definitely not hearing it from anybody. If there anybody's out there looking to call in, please do. We're gonna move on. So back to, to the planning commissioners. Again, anything? If not, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number P-2020-3052. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving a tentative map of a 5.99 acre parcel into two parcels, 0.65 acres and 0.51 acre in size.
You get a roll call, Katie.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie? Yes. Chairman Mobley?
Yes. There you go, Al, you're ready to rock.
Well, thank you very much and have a good night.
You, too. Okay, moving on to our second one. A consideration of an 18-month extension of approval tentative map to a subdivision, a 1.82 parcel into eight single-family residential lots. This on the west side of Fortuna Boulevard, north of Alder Drive. So I think I remember this one. This is over there by. Yeah. This is going around the backside in that lot.
Yeah, so when you saw this, it was the entire parcel. Since then, the commercial lot to the, on the east side of Roanoke Creek has been subdivided as phase one. And so the new owner has acquired the eight lots, the single-family lots that are on the west side.
Didn't, can I ask a quick question? Didn't we say something about a secondary access to that or something? Was that was, if I remember right, there was something in there at one point?
I don't think so. I'm sure it was discussed, but there's a, the city has a storm drain easement.
Right.
As part of the Roanoke Creek flood control project. And so you can kind of see, it's probably about 50 feet wide. Same width as these lots. And there's no provision for an easement to cross, to enter on this map. So so it was approved. This is how it was approved. And we can look at the tentative map as well. So, yeah, this project, the subdivision was approved on November 19th, 2018. City Council Resolution 2018-36. And the subdivision map act allows an approval of 24 months. So it, the expiration date is November 18th, 2020, but there is an automatic 60-day extension under which it's operating now. So it's technically, its expiration is January 18th, 2021. The map act then allows up to five years of extensions. And the Fortuna zoning code allows those extensions to be done in 18-month increments. So they need to, you know, as long as this map has not been recorded, then they would need to return to the city with extensions every 18 months, basically. So this is the area, you can see the Alder Drive gives access. And then this is the, would be the new road. The improvements have been under construction. The improvement plans have been approved and they've been under construction to some degree. I haven't been out there to see. But I know the public works department has been working with the property owner, Abe Fokert. And I noticed that he's here tonight. And this is really a standard subdivision with, in the R16 zone with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. And this is the subdivision itself, the tentative map. Yeah, it was not approved with any connection or easement to the north, I think, because of the, you can see the storm drain. This is the overflow channel for the creek. Let's see. As far as it's a subdivision map act and what it allows for extensions. So again, I described the extension periods. And, you know, their city staff doesn't see any reason not to approve the extension. If a planning, if a legislative body wanted to disapprove it or not approve it, you know, some findings, health and safety findings would need to be made as to why it's not in the public interest to approve the map typically. If conditions change radically or if city, of city standards have changed, that would, you know, warrant a new design or something like that, then it would, could be disapproved. But I really don't see that here. And then, and then legislative bodies may add conditions during this process. And that was done for the McDonald subdivision two years ago. It was required to realign the entrance to match up with the, at a berry lane across, across Rossville Road. So that can be done. Again, city staff hasn't identified any requirements that would warrant that. But I will hand that back to the planning commission for discussion.
If I remember right, we had a resident or two talk about this and talk about the flooding that they experienced in their backyards and stuff.
Yeah, I believe this should make the flooding better. It should alleviate that flooding problem.
It'll make it better for the existing homes, but what about the new ones?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're designed to drain to the street, to the new street. And then, you know, into, I, I'm not really familiar with the improvement plans, but I'm sure Abe can answer that. But I'm sure that, you know, it's designed to flood, to flow. It may get picked up along the edge here and then diverted into, you know, like a single drainage place. Or it could be, I'm not sure if it just floods sheet flows across the road. But I know that, I'm sure that Abe can describe how those, you know, I don't see a problem with, with grading the lots to drain to the street. And I think, and that will help the, the properties to the south as well because now this area is not going to be flooding onto their property. Everything from the north now is going to be picked up by that overflow basin, the Roanoke Creek overflow basin.
So I got a quick one that they seem to bring up usually, but I'm just looking at access again. And the road width, I, I can't see on that map and I don't, and this is way too small for me to read. Can we get how wide is it? The access looks like it's wide enough, but the road itself and the turnaround, as far as, you know, what we gotta do to get in and out of there?
So the road itself is.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Abe Fokert here. I was wondering if anyone's went through there. We are about 95-plus percent complete with all the improvements in that development. Working with public works the whole time. All the drainage is in, the lots are graded, urban gutters in, all the utilities are in. We have a little bit to work on Alder Drive and pavement left on this project. So I just wanted to put that out there for anyone who didn't, hasn't taken a look at the project on the ground.
Yeah.
So. We're like a month away. We've been surveyed, we've got all our markers in. I mean, this, this job is, this project is pretty much complete at this point. Real close.
So Abe, how wide's the road?
I want to say it's 40-plus sidewalks through there. And we.
So the reason it's more, it's, it looks narrow, it is narrow because the parking lane on the north side has been eliminated since there aren't any homes there that would require parking. So that's why it is probably eight feet or narrow then. So it could be.
Yes, there's no parking on the north side of that, that lane there. The only thing that really came up on the road was we did widen the cul-de-sac for, per the fire department's request on the radius of the cul-de-sac. So that, that got bigger off the tentative map to what we have now. Everything else is real close to what we have there.
So hey, you know why I'm asking, right? So I'm gonna get, there's one about getting the garbage trucks, fire trucks, whatever else, other kind of truck getting in there. And, you know, people deciding, we tell them not to park on the road, but they always do. Making sure we can get in and out of there with that, with easy access to all that.
Absolutely, yeah. And that, that's been brought up. And so we did widen, widen the radius there. There are no, no parking signs going up all along that north side of that, of that lane there.
Yeah, and this will be a city road, so it will have, you know, enforcement ability by the Fortuna Police Department on that no parking. And then I will add that the, you know, Lon Winburn, the fire chief, did sign the improvement plan. So I'm sure that's how, you know, that's how he's able to have oversight on the turnaround.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have anything? So I'm gonna open up the public comment. So again, Kate, if you'd flash that number again for us, please. Katie, you there?
Liz, do you want to unshare?
Sorry?
Got it.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Okay. So anybody out there, please call in if they have questions or comments about this. So where we have dead airspace? Everybody getting ready for the holiday?
Are you ever ready?
Anybody participating in the decoration contest?
Oh, we're on the map.
I live at Kenmore and Kenwood, and I think that my neighbors are going to win. They do it big, big every year.
That's nice.
Yeah, it's really nice that they're across the street, so we get to see their decorations out the window all season long.
The one with the, they have a tunnel of lights, that house?
Yes.
Yeah, they're my neighbor, too. That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm gonna do the kids' Christmas pictures in that tunnel, I think, this year.
That's cool.
Hey, Chris, Kathleen's aunt that lives across the street from you was complaining because you, your blowups aren't up during the day. She.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, it looks like a, a whole bunch of dead things out in the yard.
Yeah. Yeah, she likes to see them.
I've been planting trees. So all the phony trees that people bring in, been taking, bringing them home and relighting them and planting them in the front yard.
Oh, nice.
Okay, Katie, we getting anything on public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Gonna close public comment. And let's move on. Anybody else have anything for staff or for? Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution P-2020-3054. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna granting an 18-month extension for the Avery Court tentative map.
I'll second.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please, Katie?
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
And Chairman Mobley?
Yes. Okay, can't wait to see it. All right, let's move on. So we are on number three. Consideration of 18-month extension to a parcel and subdivision, a 0.9 acre parcel into two residential parcels, 0.4 and 0.5 in size. This is on 1125 Angel Heights. So can we get some background on this, please? I don't think I remember this one.
Yes, so this subdivision was approved on October 23rd, 2018. And this just went to the planning commission because it's a minor subdivision, four, four lots or fewer. And again, kind of the same situation. It was approved for, for two years. And under the map act, it can have an additional five years approved in 18-month increments according to the Fortuna Municipal Code. And it's good for the additional 60 days. Location is on the overhead, so it's at the north end of Knight Street. And then to the right is Christian Ridge Road and then Angel Heights Drive. So it's at the very end on the north side of Angel Heights Drive. It is in a zone of, it's R110. So 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. And the B1 is applied in older parts of town where it might benefit from smaller set, building setbacks. So it's got the smaller R16 setback, so five, five feet. So it's got the smaller R one-six setback, so five, five feet on the side, twenty in the front, fifteen in the rear. And this is the parcel right here. And then on the northwest side is a bluff, it's up on the bluff and down below is that extension of Ninth Street. At the end of Ninth Street, so, so it's an elevation drop down there. And this is the tentative map. And you can see Angel Heights down at the bottom, and they will be doing road improvements to add, to continue the paving. And the split, there's, will be a vacant parcel on the front and then a private driveway to create access to the parcel in the back, which is developed with a single-family residence. And so the, the road will be paved, parking area will be paved, and you can see that there will be a paved fire truck turnaround. And that was worked out with the fire chief as well. And then again, the, kind of the same situation, you know, this is an infill lot, it's in an older part of town where the infrastructure is in place and is satisfactory as far as the water and sewer and other utilities. So this will have the same situation where they will have a new cleanout and a new water meter. And you know, I think that's really about it. Everything else down here, these are the existing houses on both sides of the property. And then again, there is this bluff overlooking this lower portion of Ninth Street. And I'm gonna hand that back to the planning commission to consider the map extension.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything they'd like to ask? Talk about-
Again, easy peasy, let's do it.
Let's do it. Okay, let's move on to public comment again. Anybody wanna talk about this? Katie, please flash the lights. There they are. Okay, please call the number if you'd like to talk about this section. Just saying, we put up those blowups that day and the neighbor across the road, he put up his and for some reason, all the blowups are facing one another and waving at each other. I looked over the line, okay, this is a little strange.
You know, it scare you at night when you're laying in bed thinking about these creatures out there who are conniving against you?
Well, you know, when, when they're waving back and forth, it gets a little weird, especially when the wind blows. It's, when they start talking that we-
That's when you pull the plug.
If I start answering, then you guys really gotta do something about me.
Yeah.
Okay.
No cocktails, no cocktails before bedtime for you?
No, no. Go outside and start stabbing them and letting air out. Okay, not hearing anything from public comment, so we're gonna close public comment. Anybody have anything they want to deliberate about, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution P dash twenty twenty dash three zero five three. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving an eighteen-month extension for the Mills brand parcel map.
Katie, can we get a roll call?
All right, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
And Chairman Mobley.
Yes. All right, there goes another one. Okay, and this one looks like we just got a little bit to do on. So motion to open, to open and continue a public hearing.
Now, we sent a supplemental staff report.
Oh, that's right, you did.
Stay on the agenda. So can I go over it or?
Please, no, go ahead.
I mean, you can introduce it.
Okay, it's a motion to open and continue a public hearing to consider approval of a lotline adjustment, reconfigure lotline between two existing buildings resulting in a single-family resident on each parcel. The project location is one-two-three-five Ross Hill Road. You're up.
Thank you. So this shows the project location, south, South Fortuna Boulevard, where it goes up the hill on Ross Hill Road. And then access is from, I think that's out of Berry Lane. And it's quite a large parcel, it's about twelve, twelve, twelve and a half acres. And it's up on the bluff, so it's a little bit hard to see from the street, but here it is. So here's out of Berry Lane. And then the two houses, there's two existing houses, both on, it's a, you know, in this case, there's two parcels here, and this is the common property line. And the two houses are, you know, fairly close together. And they share a common driveway here, and they share water and sewer lines. And so this is the common property line that will be relocated in between the houses to create one house on each lot, which makes sense. And it is in a trust right now, so, you know, it's apparently intended for, for sale of the two lots. And this is the, the plot plan for the lotline adjustment out of Berry Lane. And then the pink shows, they will need to create a, an easement, a road easement, since, you know, now it's gonna be split, so their, half of the road will be on, you know, on each, each one of the parcels, and it'll be a forty-foot easement for future development. Both parcels will have subdivision potential, so they want to maintain some, you know, appropriate access for that. Oh, and this shows the new property line. So the old property line, the dashed line will be eliminated and the new property line will be the solid line here. So parcel one will have one house on it and parcel two will have the other half. And then you can see here also the shared water line and the shared sewer. They will create easements for those. The city engineer did not feel the need at this point to require separate lines. It's, you know, there's a lot of construction that would be required. There's a steep bank here. And it's quite a distance, so it'd be more appropriate to allow them to continue sharing the lines. And then, you know, sometime in the future, when mains are brought up, if they're, you know, if and when they're, it's likely that there would be some kind of a subdivision here in the future, and then they could connect to the main lines at that point, so. The only conditions of approval for the lotline adjustment are for the easements to be created. And other than that, you know, other than that, it's straightforward, and I'll pass it back to the planning commission.
Thanks, Liz. Anybody have any questions? Always liked that place up there, it's just a huge lot. Hey, gonna open it up to public comment. Katie, can you flash the number again, please? You gotta share, Liz.
So, thank you.
Thanks. So on this, it's on the, I think the motion is on the agenda item you sent to us?
Yes.
So does everybody have that email?
Maybe Katie or I can read it as well if, if needed.
I got it here.
Great, great, perfect. So we getting anything on this? Anybody wanna talk about it? Look at it.
I am not public comment.
Thank you.
We do have the representative, the property, Mr. Burchett is here if he'd like to say something.
Please.
Yeah, hi, this is Mark. I, I don't have any questions. I just was here to answer questions if you had any, so, no, it's pretty straightforward.
All right, thank you.
Lotline adjustment, so, yeah.
All right, so not hearing anything, we're gonna close public comment. And back to the planning commission, anybody have anything they want to bring up, or somebody want to make a motion about it?
Anybody, I'll make the motion if nobody has anything to say.
I'm not hearing anything, so.
All right, motion to adopt resolution P dash twenty twenty dash three zero five five. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a lotline adjustment for the Ruth Crane Trust.
Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Katie, can you?
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
And Chairman Mobley.
Yes. All right, there we go. Okay, staff report, anything going on?
Um, let's see. Well, first I want to thank everybody for attending the Zoom meeting, you know, and these are simple projects tonight. And it, you know, and sometimes it feels cursory, but they're really important, you know, to the applicants. And so we really appreciate your being involved and, and supporting, you know, development in, in the city. We couldn't do it without you. And then, what else was I gonna say? We appreciate your involvement in the planning workshop, the City Council Planning Commission workshop on the SB two grant projects, you know, and, and we discussed the accessory dwelling unit standards and the multifamily design standards. So, and I think that the consultants gave a, a pretty good, darn good presentation. And, you know, and the participation and, and the comments were really helpful as a whole, allowing them, allowing us to move forward. And those are gonna, you know, the standards will be brought to you as they explained, so I think it's probably helpful for you to have the, receive the presentation as well and know, you know, kind of give you time to think about things and be prepared for what's the draft ordinance is that'll be coming. So thanks for that. And then let's see, the status of the planning commission vacancies. So Rachel Moore appears to have resigned, so in January, the council, the, the code requires the council to declare the vacancy, so that'll be done in January. Since we haven't received a, a formal resignation from Rachel, we want the council to make that, declare the vacancy. And that will allow Jason Church to be official as regular planning commissioner. And then Gina McLendon just submitted her resignation, she, because she was elected on the school board, the high school board. So she feels like she, you know, ethically, it's recommended that you not serve on two local boards like that that could have conflicts in the future. So she did submit her resignation. So we, now, then we will have two vacancies, one for the alternate and one regular. So if you know of anybody that you want to suggest they submit an application, they can get the application probably online, but certainly at City Hall. And we'll be noticing that, you know, calling for applications for the planning commission in January. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions or any comments or anything?
Are we gonna be having another meeting this month?
We are not.
So we're done.
We're done for the year.
So Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, y'all.
Christmas.
Thank you all.
Well, I'll have to drive by. What's that?
I was just gonna thank everybody for the whole year of, this has been
Yeah.
tiring at best. It's just been a, a year. Hopefully next year we'll get better and this little year will go out without a bang.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm glad we're bringing Jason in on for permanent, not just an alternate. Yay.
Yes. I like, I like that too.
All right, everybody.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Wait, you guys need to adjourn. Hey, we have a second?
Our second?
All right. Okay, it's official. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, y'all. Happy New Year.
Bye.